Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, there's a, I think I gave a good, oh yeah, Jim Wilson's a talent, too.
You know what? The key is having good people.
Yeah.
They have great stuff. And National Geographic has stepped back from it, and they've got bigger support from like MGM and a bunch of other companies.
Yeah.
Come on, hey? We're late.
I didn't sign them as, did we have certificates? Does the council give them certificates? Did we sign them? Oh. Okay. Just thought I'd ask, because I don't remember. But then I don't remember last name. Yes. I can put my coffee cup in the roll. There you go.
I got coffee and I got coffee. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Northampton County Council Meeting of November 16, 2017, to order. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Ms. Zembo, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bennell?
Here.
Mr. Kuzick?
Present.
Mr. Deetz?
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Here.
Mr. Geiger is absent. Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
And Mr. Warren?
Here.
All present except Mr. Geiger.
We have one absence this evening. First item is the approval of the minutes of the November 2, 2017 council meeting and the October 25, 2017 budget hearing.
Motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Kraft to approve by acclamation, seconded by Mr. Bennell. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays or abstentions, passes by a vote of eight to zero. Okay, then that brings us to the next item on the agenda, and for that, I will call on Ms. Trapp to introduce our Citizens Academy participants and graduates this evening. Ms. Trapp?
Thank you. Good evening, council. This year, we had another Citizens Academy, ten weeks, where people who live within the county are able to see the functional areas that their tax dollars support. This year, we had ten people. Unfortunately, there's one person who's unable to make it tonight. She had parent-teacher conferences, and she didn't want to miss it, so she's unable to make it. I asked the group if anybody would like to speak about their experience, so I'm going to let them do that. The first person is Mackenzie Guyer, and she said she would be willing to speak for you.
Thank you, Mackenzie Guyer, just for point of reference. I know I had the pleasure of meeting a couple of you ahead of this. I'm originally from Bangor. My roots are there, my family's there, my parents, my grandparents. Currently live in Easton now in Palmer. And I want to thank Amy and the other chaperones, if you will. I know a great deal of work and coordination went into making this happen. I appreciate every bit of it, and kind of want to share for a minute while I even did this. So, I work for AT&amp;T, and we have the great pleasure of being part of a federal government-wide, really countrywide program called FirstNet, which is building a public safety network across all of the country. Thrilled to say that when I started this, Pennsylvania had not opted in, and they have now opted in. And part of my job is to enable our sales team with the right tools so they can go out and speak with our public safety community. And part of that is my own level of education and understanding how our county government works. So I'll have the pleasure of going to find a police academy following this, but I had no expectations coming into this. I didn't know where I would be going, I didn't know how the meetings would work, and I think I've walked out of here every night, calling my husband, going, "This was really cool. Let me share this with you." So I just want to say, thank you so much for allowing us a peek behind your doors. I know you are county government, but you still have very wildly opened the kimono and allowed us to ask any questions we want, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And hopefully, I'm going to say his name right. Al Minento? Did I say it right?
Again, members of council, thank you. The 2017 class thanks you for letting us participate again in the Citizens Academy. And again, I really didn't have any expectations. I do know that the county spiderwebbed into all kinds of different directions. I wasn't sure where. This experience opened my eyes, and as one observation, the employees of this county in the, I don't want to call it their chosen profession, or their job, or their career, but it's more like a vocation. What we've seen in these past ten weeks was just phenomenal. These people go at this wholeheartedly, from beginning till the end of their shift, you know, sometimes three shifts, you know, all day, all week, all year. It was truly amazing to see the caliber of employees that we have on staff. So again, this was truly an amazing experience, and it almost should be some kind of a mandatory experience, but this was truly a nice job, and thank you. And thanks, guys, for helping us, being our moderators, or babysitters, or whatever you want, getting us all organized in different trips.
They prefer gracious hosts.
Gracious hosts. But again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then the last person whose arm we twisted, I believe, was Deanne Workheiser?
Okay, she volunteered. I volunteer. Good evening. My name is Deanne Workheiser. I live in Palmer, but I'm from Tatum originally, and I'm the Tatum Municipal Secretary. And I posted this out for my residents to come and do this Citizens Academy, and I thought, you know what, I think I want to give this a try, because I know of most of the people within your positions and within various functions throughout the county, because I deal with them from a municipal level, but I've only talked to them on the phone or conversed via email. So it was wonderful for me to see the people that I deal with on an actual basis. I think my expectations were different than somebody coming in from the outside, and mine were just to meet and to see what runs behind, because I think that people don't realize how much goes on here and how much is put into everything that is done. And I kind of agree that I think it should be mandatory for a lot of people to come through and see what it is that is done here. So thank you for allowing us to be here. Thank you for our gracious hosts, for guiding us throughout this tour, and I hope that this is something that you continue to put out there for the residents to do, because it is a wonderful opportunity for everybody to see what goes into making this county what it is. So thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move into the presentation of the proclamation. So we're in alphabetical order. I don't think we're sitting that way, but when we ask you to come up, the executive, Mr. Brown, and the president of council, Mr. Kuzick, will present your proclamation to you, and thank you for participating. So the first person we have is Johnny Carolino. Charles Peterson?
Tell me how to say it if I'm not saying it right.
Oh, okay. Charles Peterson?
I think he got the wrong one. Just a minor glitch.
Monica Seligman? We also may be missing Patricia Stoniker, although I think I accidentally marked them, and I apologize. And then Deanna Workheiser again. And we just want to thank everybody as well who participated.
Mr. Bennell, would you like to say a few things to the graduates?
I did the Citizens Academy four years ago, right before I started the campaign, and it was a, for a candidate, it was, excuse me, I thought it was a phenomenal experience, because very few people outside of, I would say, the county employees or the county administration accounts get to see what we see on the academy. I'm still floored by my visit to the jail. It was, knock on wood, and I'll probably call my parents again tonight to thank them. I've never seen anything like that, and going through the old section of the prison, as much as I was enamored by the architecture, it was just, I don't see how there's a recidivism rate, because it was just, to me, it would be a life-altering experience. But it is valuable. I hope the next administration keeps doing it, and, you know, please stay active. You see what the county does, you see all the volunteers and the help that the county needs, you know, and if you have friends, relatives that want to take it, please have them sign up. Thank you.
Thank you, and on behalf of myself and the other members of council, you know, we appreciate the time and effort that you've put in. I'll just say that the program that you just went through puts you in a position where you now know more about county government than I did when I was first elected. So, so it's a terrific experience, and I too hope that the program continues. Any other comments from council? Thank you very much. I think there's cake and popcorn and some goodies across the hall, and, you know, thank you again. All right, then we'll move into the next item on the agenda, which is courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone that would like to address council this evening under courtesy of the floor? Mr. Heckman?
I wasn't going to. Bron Heckman, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. I actually wasn't going to, but I had a chance to talk to Mr. Phillips, and I just want to say, you know, I'd like to think of myself as less of a jerk than I was when I was younger, or maybe when I got on, you know, we all go different ways as we get older. But, you know, about this election, I've won, I've lost elections, and, you know, you campaign, but then you govern, and, believe me, I understand the sting of elections where you don't make it. And I knew, I've known Mrs. Ferraro for ages, and I certainly knew Mr. Engel for a long time, and I got to know some of the other folks four years ago when we ran, and they won. But I just want, actually, I want to say, you know, thank you for putting yourselves out there and serving, because there is a difference. I know we go after each other in these things, but just what Mr. Kuzick was saying about local government, and I was talking to a few people about that before the meeting started, we're right here, you know, you're right there with the people. And I know everybody does the best they can, even when we don't always agree on things. And so I actually personally, you know, thank you for your service, thank you for putting out yourselves to the people, and, you know, the sting actually does lessen over time, and I felt that. But your service record endures and your time you gave, and it's something to be proud of. So that's all, I just wanted to say that, and since the election's over, there's nothing political about it, and I don't think I'll be seeing any other elections. So, you know, and I would just say this to everybody, like I know myself, there's always another election out there if you're so inclined. Sometimes people aren't. But anyway, I sincerely mean what I just said.
Thank you. Congratulations. Anyone else would like to address council this evening? There being none, we'll move, next item is the confirmation of appointments. At this point, I'll call on Mr. Bennell to introduce the resolution.
Okay, resolved by the Northampton County Council that the following individual shall be confirmed in her reappointments as indicated hereafter. On the airport authority, it's the reappointment of Ann Baum, 3621 Hickory Hill Road of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, term to expire December 31 of 2021. And on the conservation district board, it's the reappointment of the farmer director, Jeffrey Kiefer, of 9275 Richmond Road in Bangor, Pennsylvania, and that term also to expire December 31 of 2021.
Okay. And these were discussed yesterday at the personnel committee meeting, and a recommendation was made to move forward. Any further discussion?
I have just one.
Yeah.
You know, these are fine people, and it's nothing against the people who are running for these things, but last time we had a new executive elect, we didn't appoint anybody to any terms for any authorities or boards until after the new executive came in at the end of the year for such a long term. And it just seems to be a courtesy that we've done for, we extended to John, I think we extended to all the other executives when they came in, and I don't know how he feels about any of these. I'm sure Ann and Jeff Kiefer are great people, and they're just reappointments, but maybe we should just put it off till next January, three weeks from now, whatever that is, because and give the new county executive elect the opportunity to appoint somebody else if he so chooses.
Is there a motion in that?
Well, I just, I don't want to get rid of him, I just want it, like, table until next, till next year.
Okay, that's where I was waiting.
That would be the motion, yeah, I'm sorry. Because, you know, anybody who volunteers for these things, you know, I'm.
Mr. Kraft has made a motion to table these appointments. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Bennell. Okay, we have a motion to table. Ms. Zembo, can we call for the vote?
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
No.
And Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of six to two.
Tabled by a vote of six to two. Okay. Then next, we'll move into the controllers' report. Mr. Barron is not here this evening. County executives' report, Mr. Brown, did you have anything this evening?
Nothing.
No report.
No.
Next is old business. We have nothing on the agenda under old business. Is there any old business that members of council would like to bring up at this time? There being none. We'll move into new business. First item is the introduction of the 2017 budget amendment ordinance, and I would need two people to sponsor, Mr. Bennell and Mr. Kraft will be sponsoring the 2017 budget amendment ordinance. Then the public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the December 7, 2017 meeting. Next item under new business is the introduction of the 2018 millage rate ordinance, and this is part of the budget adoption process, and we would need two people to introduce the ordinance. Mr. Kraft and Mr. Deetz will be cosponsors for the millage rate ordinance. Then the public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the December 7, 2017 meeting. Item number three in a new business is the introduction of an ordinance titled An Ordinance of the Northampton County Council pursuant to the Hotel Room Rental Tax Act of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the Tourist Promotion Law of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and ordinance numbers 359 of 2000 and 440 of 2005, determining that the Da Vinci Science Center, a not-for-profit corporation within Northampton County, engage in tourism-related activities that benefit Northampton County and therefore directing a portion of the Northampton County annual allocation of 12.5% of the revenue generated by the Hotel Room Rental Tax Act, and Northampton County ordinance is 359 of 2000 and 440 of 2005, to be distributed to Da Vinci Science Center for the Da Vinci Science Center project located in Easton, Pennsylvania, in accordance with this ordinance. And Mr. Kraft and myself are cosponsoring the ordinance, and the public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the December 7, 2017 meeting. Next item under new business is the introduction of an ordinance titled An Ordinance of the Northampton County Council pursuant to the Hotel Room Rental Tax Act of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the Tourist Promotion Law of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and ordinance numbers 359 of 2000 and 440 of 2005, determining that the Da Vinci Science Center, a not-for-profit corporation within Northampton County, engage in tourism-related activities that benefit Northampton County and therefore directing a portion of the Northampton County annual allocation of 12.5% of the revenue generated by the Hotel Room Rental Tax Act, and Northampton County ordinance is 359 of 2000 and 440 of 2005, to be distributed to Da Vinci Science Center for the Da Vinci Science Center project located in Easton, Pennsylvania, in accordance with this ordinance. And Mr. Kraft and myself are cosponsoring the ordinance, and the public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held on the, at the December 7, 2017 meeting. Next item under new business is the introduction of an ordinance titled An Ordinance Providing for the Conveyance of a 1.205-acre Rite of Way owned by Northampton County located in Allen Township to the Rockefeller Group Development Corporation to undertake certain public roadway and infrastructure improvements, including the widening of Willowbrook Road and improving the county-controlled bridge located adjacent to Wayne Group Park. And at this time, I would ask for two sponsors for this, Mr. Kraft and Mr. Deetz will be cosponsoring the ordinance, and the public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the December 7, 2017 meeting. Next item under new business is consideration of personnel requests for the Department of Administration 911 Division Resolution, and at this time, I'll call on Mr. Bennell to introduce the resolution.
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the six positions of supervisor pay grade CS24 salary range $50,130 to $71,325 shall be created in the Department of Administration 911 Operations Division effective November 16, 2017. It is further hereby resolved that 20 positions of dispatcher pay grade RU20 salary range $36,355 to $51,726 shall be created in the Department of Administration 911 Operations Division effective November 16, 2017.
And these items were discussed at length yesterday at the Personnel Committee meeting, and Mr. Weaver gave a presentation as to the need for these additional positions and how they're being staggered with the training, and there was a recommendation to move forward with it. Is there any further discussion? Okay. I just want to make one point, and this came out later in the evening. I do think we need to have some sort of an agreement with Lehigh County as to, you know, the allocation of funds when we take over West Bethlehem. That was something that I don't believe has been resolved, and I think that that's something that's going to have to be worked out through this process when the switch is finally flipped in a year and a half or so, so, just something for the next administration to get on. Any further discussion? Can we call for the vote, then?
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
And Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item under new business is consideration of the listing of county depositories Resolution, and I'll just read that in, because Mr. Geisinger is not here. Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that the following shall constitute the current and updated listing of county authorized depositories. Sections marked with bold underlining have been added, sections marked with strikeout have been deleted, effective this 16th day of November, 2017. We are striking out Florida Capital Bank from our list of depositories and renumbering the other existing ones to reflect that deletion. Be it further resolved that any resolution or part thereof conflicting with the provisions of this resolutions is hereby repealed, insofar as the same affects this resolution or is inconsistent with this resolution. This was discussed yesterday at the Finance Committee, and a recommendation to approve was made at that time. Is there any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call for the vote?
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item is the consideration of the Greysdale Private Pay Rate Resolution, and I'll call on Mr. Vaughn to introduce the resolution.
Thank you. Resolved by Northampton County Council that effective January 1, 2018, the Greysdale Private Pay Rate shall be, A, $330 per day for semi-private room, and B, $340 per day for a private room.
And this was discussed yesterday at the Finance Committee, and there was a recommendation for approval. Any further discussion on the item? Ms. Zembo, can we call for the vote?
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item under new business is consideration of Recorder of Deeds Fee Schedule Resolution, and I'll read that one, because Mr. Geisinger is not here. Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that the fee schedule for the Recorder of Deeds Office shall be amended to read as indicated on the attached documentation. Revised fees shall take effect November 30, 2017, and the changes are to, they're the highlighted ones, right? Deed, $75.25, mortgage, $75.25, alignment or release of mortgage, $60.75, satisfaction of mortgage, $60.75, installment, sales or purchase agreement, $58.75, leases of a term of 30 years or longer, $58.75, easement or rite of way, $58.75, and I believe the rest all remain the same. Again, this was discussed at the Finance Committee, and a recommendation for approval was made. Is there any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call for the vote?
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item under new business is consideration of the video gaming terminals within Northampton County opt-out resolution, and I'll call on Mr. Kraft to introduce this resolution.
Now therefore be it resolved by Northampton County Council as follows. The placement of video gaming terminals at certain truck stops as permitted in the Pennsylvania Racehorse Development and Gaming Act 4 PACSS 1101, established sequential, shall be prohibited in Northampton County pursuant to the authority granted to host counties of slot machine licenses and selection, 4506 of said act.
Any discussion on this?
I understand that there was, there's only one truck stop that would have met these requirements.
I had Mr. Hurlinger do some research, and based on the gaming law- Um, I had Mr. Hurlinger, uh, do some research, and, uh, based on the, uh, gaming law that was recently passed, he was able to identify one location. Uh, that was a truck stop in Stockertown. Um, that would be the only potential, uh, location that, that he believes in Northampton County could, uh, meet the requirements under the gaming, uh, law, and I think I have those. Uh, it has to be a place that's equipped with Diesel Islands sell, uh, used for fueling commercial vehicles, sold an average of 50,000 gallons of diesel or bio, biodiesel in the past previous 12 months, have 20 parking spaces, have a convenience store located on no less than three acres, and is not located on a property owned by the Turnpike. So, given all of those restrictions, there was only that one property, so.
Do you have any idea how much money Northampton County will be losing if we don't grant this?
Uh, the casino themselves weren't interested in opening a VGT thing in other, other parts of the county.
Excuse me?
And those are the people that do it. So, if they're not interested in opening one in other parts of the county, the casino, the Sands, those are the ones who operate it. They are not interested in doing it.
And they, they're not?
They have no interest in VGTs anywhere in the entire state of Pennsylvania, or online gaming, or any of the other nonsense that the legislature passed. So, I don't personally want to see expansion of gaming in Northampton County either.
Out of Bethlehem?
Pardon me?
Outside of Bethlehem.
No, anywhere in the county. I mean, you know, they, they have, they have, they have brick-and-mortar places that these people came and invested all over the state, and now they want to dilute it by letting you sit at home and gamble on your iPad and
I know.
open places all over the place, and, you know, we should support the people who came and invested all the money, no matter where it is. If even it was up by your house in Nazareth, you know, it would have been the same thing. I feel the same way about it.
That's.
And we only have like, what, two weeks?
That station is my neighborhood.
Yeah, in your neighborhood. We have two weeks to opt out of it, you know? It's like they made it that you had to do it within, this is the only meeting we can opt out of it.
Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, my understanding is that, um, the, the most prudent thing to do is to opt out of it, because we have two weeks to opt out of it, and if we don't, um, then, then forever we'll be eligible for it. But even though in these two weeks we opt out of it, we will have a, a, an option in the future to rescind this and opt back in. So, this is like, for us, this is, to me, a conservative, a prudent guy, this is the most prudent thing for us to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. And any other discussion, Mr. Bennell?
Mr. Kraft had me at the brick-and-mortar. So, I, I don't gamble, but I, I'd rather have my, my finances go to actual people and jobs instead of, uh, an electronic machine, so.
Anything else on the, uh, opt-out provision? Okay, um, Ms. Zembo, can we call for the vote?
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
And Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, passes unanimously, and, um, can we send a copy of this to the, um, Gaming Control Board? Do you have the address?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Pamela Lewis, Board Secretary. I don't know if you have that.
No.
Okay. All right, uh, then the next item is consideration of a resolution approving the 2017 Community Investment Partnership Program projects and community improvement grant projects for funding. And, uh, at this time, I'll call on Mr. Werner, uh, and, uh, Mr. Phillips. I believe you worked on this as well to introduce the resolution.
Whereas the, uh, MCDCED has presented the Grant Review Committee's recommendation totaling $730,000 in grant funds for 22 projects to the Economic Development Subcommittee of Northampton County Council, and whereas the SIP projects will be funded using the Northampton County Local Share Table Games Revenue, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the County of Northampton, that the attached fiscal year 2017 SIP grant project recommendations for funding is approved by Northampton County Council, that the county executive of the County of Northampton is authorized to execute grant agreements with the applications, not to exceed the approved amount for each grant. Uh, now that I read that in, um, Bob and I spent two days with, uh, representatives from the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, Lehigh Valley Economic Development Corporation, and with our, uh, community and economic development team. Uh, we, we went through these, you know, in great detail. We ranked them. Um, we had difference of opinions among ourselves. Uh, the, the rules were very clear. I think it was a, a fair and honest, you know, ranking system, and, and I, I personally, um, uh, recommend these. Uh, I think it was, it was a team effort, and I was part of that team, and I, I stand behind that.
Any further discussion on the SIP recommendations? I'll just say, um, to the gentlemen, uh, who spent this time, uh, this is good work. I mean, when this program started, there was some question as to what qualified and what didn't, and, uh, I think you did a good job vetting all these. Uh, I think we could, you know, maybe criticize one or two here or there, but on the whole, um, I, I can't disagree with this list, so, thank you very much, and that was good work. Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
And Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item under New Business is consideration of the Salkin Rail Trail Connection and Sinage Project Resolution, and I'll call on Mr. Deetz to introduce that resolution.
All right, now therefore be resolved that Northampton County Council supports the use of Act 13 Marcellus Sale Legacy Fund up to $21,000 for the following. The purchase and installation of trail signage at the identified points and intersections located within the borough of Hellertown and along the Salkin Trail, Rail Trail. The final construction needed to create a safe walkway between the Salkin Rail Trail and the borough neighborhoods and businesses located along Salkin Street.
And this was discussed, uh, earlier this evening at the Open Space Committee, and a recommendation to move forward was made. Is there any further discussion on this item? There being none. Ms. Zembo, can we call for the vote?
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
And Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item under New Business, consideration of the Resolution Amending Resolution Number, uh, 28 dash 2016, and I'll call on Mr. Deetz to introduce that resolution.
All right, uh, now therefore it be resolved by Northampton County Council that Resolution 28 dash 2016 amend, well, will be amended to indicated hereafter. Sections marked with strikeouts have been deleted, and sections marked with bold underline have been added. Uh, going over to the second page, whereas Northampton County will have available, crossing out $60,000 and replacing it with $64,357.72 from the Act 13 Marcellus Sale Legacy Fund, and receive up to 50% or up to $30,000 as reimbursement from DCNR as grant reward at the completion of the project.
Okay, and again, this was discussed earlier this evening at the Open Space Committee Meeting. Uh, is there any further discussion on this item? Uh, there being none. Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item is the consideration of the Resolution Amending Resolution Number 32 dash 2017, and I'll call on Mr. Deetz to introduce that resolution.
All right, I guess just some background. So, the one we just read was, uh, approving spending that much, and, and the second one here is the allocation of that spending for it, so. Now therefore be, hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that Resolution 32 dash 2017 will be amended as indicated hereafter. Sections marked with strikeouts have been deleted, and sections marked with bold underline have been added. Again, going to the second page on March, uh, whereas on March 2nd, 2017, Northampton County Council received a request from the county executive for the county council to adopt the resolution endorsing a contracting amount of, crossed out, $59,857.72, and replaced with $64,357.72. What's that? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, all right. Uh, sorry, going back to the first page here on the bottom. Whereas Northampton County Administrative Code, Article 8 procurement, or 13 procurement and disposition of the county property, Section 13, six, point 16, Contracts and Agreements, C2 requires the approval of county council for any contract where costs are to be funded with monies outside the county's general fund, such as funded through bonded indebtedness. And then, uh, reading back where it was, for crossing out, uh, $59,857.72 and spending $64,357.72 with Gilmore and Associates for professional planning and services for the Northern Tier Trail feasibility study for proposed 35-plus trail system connecting open space, waterways, farmland, and small borough streets across northern portion of the county for a term of one year.
Okay. Uh, again, this was discussed at the Open Space Committee earlier this evening. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Passes unanimously. Uh, that was all we had under New Business. Is there any other new business that anyone would like to bring up at this time? Mr. Deetz?
Uh, one thing, uh, actually brought to my attention last night, actually, I, I saw on a petition, um, online for it was, of course, on Election Day, you know, we had the, the shooting of the officer on 33 there, and, uh, so they shut down the nearby schools. My, my children go to Plainfield Elementary, and it was shut down, but there was actually voting going on over at the Beth, um, Bushkill Elementary School, and so all the neighboring areas were locked, and the schools were locked down while, you know, they were in pursuit of, of that guy, and they still, the school opened up for voting, so, um, there, there was a, a real cry, and, and I think it makes sense of, of moving the voting out of the schools there, uh, on election days, you know? It, it leaves the kids vulnerable for situations like that.
Well, I, I have a comment on that. Something that the schools could do is schedule an in-service day for that day, um, rather than opening schools. So, that's an alternative that, uh, schools can consider. Uh, we, we've had this issue brought before the Election Commission, uh, many times, and I think that the, they've indicated, and their solicitor indicated, that schools are public buildings that should be available for, um, elections. So, um, I, I think that that's something for the school boards to consider, um, in the future if they want to, um, avoid, um, any potential issue between voters and, um, Mrs. Ferraro?
But I know that the firehouse, uh, is available also for voting, and I, it's only a mile or two away from the school, so I think it's really up to the Election Commission to, uh, to look at all of those things, because with this, I know this issue has come up other times. John and I have been through this quite often, and, um, okay, so I know there's other possibilities, and I agree with the in-service. They had an in-service on Veterans Day on Friday, and, and, and most schools weren't closed on Friday.
Yeah, and I, I guess that's definitely an, an option, you know, and, and of course, there was some conversation of, you know, putting officers there, which is not, which is frowned upon, you know, having officers outside of, you know, for intimidation or whatever on Election Day, they said, um, but.
Well, I believe that, uh, the constable would be the responsible party for, for that. Mr. Phillips?
Um, similar, uh, the Boots Elementary School in Bushkill Township has a petition going on.
That's what we're talking?
No, you were, you were talking about something in.
In Bushkill, Bushkill.
Oh, you were talking of Bushkill?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about.
I, I was saying, so.
Changed the name.
Well, Plainfield shut down, which my daughter's in, you know, they were locked down and going through with it. Bushkill tried to lock it down, but they saw voting going on, so there was some concern by, by parents and family members that, that they were susceptible.
Yeah, I, I understand, and they can bring those concerns to the Election Commission, um, and if there are other alternative polling places, that may be an option, but in some cases, that's, that's not always possible. And in those cases, I would urge the school boards to consider making that day an in-service day for their teachers, um, so as, in order to avoid that potential, um, disruption or situation, so. Any other, um, new business? Council Committee Reports? Mrs. Ferraro?
The Economic Development Committee didn't meet, but as Chair of, uh, Economic Development, I do appreciate the ordinance for the Da Vinci Science Center that was introduced this evening. However, I do plan to, um, offer amendments as far as the funding is concerned at our next meeting when we have the public, public hearing.
Okay.
So, I, and I would appreciate anyone who has any thoughts or ideas as to how you feel this should be funded. I would very much appreciate if you could call me.
Okay.
Or email something.
Okay. Uh, any other committee, Mr. Deetz?
Actually, we had a good Open Space Committee, good, good update on Mincy Lake and, and a lot of stuff going on there, and, uh, they're really getting a lot of ducks in a row, you know, to say, and, and get funding going forward, and, and, uh, they're working real hard to make use of the time while the lake is drained down and, and make it a, a really good asset for the county when it, once it's back up.
Yeah, and one, uh, key piece of information that came out of that meeting is that the municipal park, uh, program is, has now ended, and, uh, Mr. Cope indicated that there's $415,000 that remain in that budget. Um, so what, um, what I'm going to do, uh, based on the input from both Mr. Cope and from Duran Hammond, is to move that money from OSI municipal parks to OSI county parks, and that way it can be used for things like, uh, Lake Mincy or, or other, uh, county park, uh, projects. Any other committee reports? Okay, uh, Council Liaison Reports?
Next budget hearing, oh.
Uh, we're not, we're one step ahead. Any liaison reports?
She's anxious.
Council Clerk?
Okay, um, the next budget hearing is November 29th, and we'll be discussing corrections, public works, capital projects, and capital improvements.
Okay. Uh, Council Solicitor?
Just with respect to the ordinance that was previously discussed to require voter approval for certain kinds of indebtedness, um, we've had some feedback from solicitors for two of the, uh, authorities who were concerned about it. We've redrafted it, I'm circulating it, and I'll, I'll have something back to you by the next meeting.
All right, then, is there anything else then for the good of the order? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Bennell, seconded by Mr. Deetz. Have a nice evening, everyone. We are adjourned.